We'll start in one minute. So I'll just recap the format real quick. So I'll do a quick introduction. And then you all have two minutes each just to sort of introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about why you're running for the council position, your seat. And then we'll turn the time over to our moderators here in the middle. And just so everyone knows, we've got on the right in the green shirt is David Pace from Post Register. In the center is Todd Coons from Local News Eight. And then we've got Jolynn Thomas from KID News Radio. So thank you very much for being here today. I am Paul. I'm the CEO for the Chamber of Commerce here for the greater Idaho Falls area. And that basically encompasses everything kind of sort of Swan Valley, Shetty, almost Blackfoot, all the way around to Rigby and back around. So that includes Ammon. I am relatively new to this post. I'm four months in this role. And as you can tell, I'm not a native of Ammon. I was trying to start a new trend of a new accent to sort of influence the area, but it's not taking off yet. But yeah, I'm from Dublin, Ireland originally. And so it's great to be here and to help facilitate and give these fine candidates a platform to share a little bit about themselves and why they're running and what they can do for this lovely town. And I'm so grateful for everyone being here today. So everyone have two minutes to answer questions. And once the first question is asked, everyone will have two to three minutes to answer that. I will keep time so everyone gets a fair amount. Hopefully, this won't be like the GOP Fox News show. If that happens, I'll be throwing Skittles at you. Just get you to calm down. But I'm hoping that it'll be informative, that it'll be fun, and have a good time and we get the right information that we want, you know? So why don't we start? And we'll kind of work our way over here from George. We'll work away around the room. Let's go. Over to you.
Sounds good. So anyway, yeah, my name is George Vandermeer. I've lived here in Ammon for 25 years already. Basically, in the insurance business, had my own agency for 20 years and been doing several other volunteer things throughout the county, such as search and rescue and sheriff's office reserve and other things. I've been with City of Ammon City Council for about a year and a half. And I blame it all on my wife, anyway. There was a position that came open. She was trying to get me out of the house. So I went ahead and interviewed for that position and was fortunate enough to be able to accept that. It's been very exciting and informative to learn how a city runs and operates. And there's a lot of moving pieces to it. So in addition to the City Council, I've also been assigned on the board for the Bonneville Metropolitan Planning Organization. And I'm also a liaison with the Bonneville County Sheriff's Office. So there's several things that we do as a council person to, in addition to the duties we have for City Council. So anyway, I'm looking forward to another two years that I'm up for right now. And hopefully, everybody will see that for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'm Jeff Fulmer, running for seat number three. Grateful to CI and for our moderators and for the chamber for putting this on and grateful to be here with all of these wonderful candidates. It's awesome to see so many running this year. I'm originally from Mackey, born and raised in the Big Lost River Valley. And after high school, when I graduated, I went up, did a semester up at Rix and then went on to your mission for my church. And then returned to Idaho and went to school at ISU and received a four-year degree. And there I met my wife Jill. And we started raising our family. And then 2007, we moved to Ammon and have been in the tiebreaker area for 17 years now, coming up this February. And so my career began in real estate and finance, worked for a developer for a while, a commercial developer, and then moved into accounting and technology. And so now work in software development. And my reason for running when I moved here to Ammon in 2007, I kind of missed that small knit community that I grew up with. I didn't feel like we had much of an identity and we're just kind of on the outskirts of Idaho Falls and that was who we were. I feel like about 2018, 2019, probably coincides with the comprehensive plan being updated, but feeling like there was a sense of community starting to grow and instilling some pride and identity within myself and realizing I want to be a part of that, part of that vision, that future. The tipping point that caused me to pull the trigger was the, when Rex Thompson called, he's currently in seat number three, and he said, "I'm not going to run again. I want someone to take my place, and I think you'd be a good fit." And so he said he'd publicly and privately endorse me. But along with that, neighbors calling up saying, "Hey, you should run. You'd be a good fit for this." The ability to represent the voice of the people and to help shape that vision of Ammon for hopefully decades to come is my goal.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chris Oswald. And I have lived in Idaho since I was two weeks old. My parents and my grandparents were born and raised in southeast Idaho, and I am a proud Idahoan. I love it. We moved to Ammon out of Idaho Falls area. Actually, when we were getting back from finishing school, we could not wait to come back to Idaho. It was like the dream we had just to get back here and raise our family here. So we, by chance, rented a house in Ammon, found a house that we could afford and rented it in Ammon. We loved it so much, our nine-month lease turned into a three-and-a-half-year lease until we built a house here in Ammon. And then we outgrew that one and we bought a bigger house in Ammon. So our goal has been to stay here in Ammon. And in 2004, we moved our business out of Idaho Falls into Ammon. And it's been a great move for us. We are the first dental office to open in Ammon. And we thought, why not live here and work here and, you know, raise our kids here? So we brought our business here and we've loved living here and having our business here. I have spent countless hours serving in our community. And it's my favorite part of life is serving in the community, especially the opportunity to get to work with the youth of this community. They are the future of Ammon. And I have enjoyed all the things that I've gotten to do and learned from them. The reason I decided to run for City Council is the last two years, I've been to a lot of planning and zoning meetings and a lot of City Council meetings. And I've had a lot of people ask me to run because I'm kind of passionate about this city. I love Ammon. It's my hometown. I've raised all five of my kids here. They're, I guess I should say, I've raised my five most favorite people on the planet here in Ammon. I feel like I was the catering taxi service and I feel like I know Ammon inside and out between the three neighborhoods we lived in and our business and my children being involved in everything, you name it. So I feel like it is my hometown and I love it. I want to have the people here in Ammon have more of a voice. I want them to have more feedback, give us feedback on what the city, what they want from the city. And I want everyone to know that I will listen. I'm a pretty good listener. I love chit-chatting, but I mostly love listening, too.
That's great. Thanks, Chris. All right, Sid.
Yes, my name is Sid Hamblin. I'm born and raised here in Idaho Falls, moved out to Ammon about 17 years ago. But I'm from a family of seven, diverse family. Loved living in Idaho Falls my whole life. My father was a policeman. I was a sheriff's deputy, retired after 27 and a half years with the sheriff's office. And then I've done different, other different things. But my greatest accomplishment that I think is raising my family of four. And I've got all my children and my grandchildren living here in Ammon now, out of California, one of them, not about California, but I love them here and just a different environment. And they moved to Ammon and both bought houses because they felt it was a community that they'd like to live in. And I'd like to leave that even in a better. But some of the things that I was proud of is sheriff's office. I got the opportunity of starting the Sheriff's Inmate Labor Program as an Idaho, which I was pretty proud of. And then I got to be the Sergeant of Arms on the American Jail Association Board in Maryland. And so those were a couple of neat accomplishments that I felt I did. But my thing is, Chris here has said, is having an open mind, willingness to hear others' opinions and make good, best calculations from the data and opinions you get from other people. And I just love Ammon and I think we can build it up and thrive, but there are some issues that do need to be addressed. I appreciate, I appreciate everybody and the opportunity to be here tonight and to be a part of this forum. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Heidi.
So my name is Heidi Boyle. I have been a resident of Ammon for almost 16 years now. I've raised my four children here. I have three that have graduated and moved on to college. I still have one that's an eighth grader at Black Canyon Middle School. And my husband and I are both in healthcare. My husband Nate is a nurse practitioner in the emergency room. And hopefully, none of you here have had to be in there. But I'm an occupational therapist and I work at Promontory Point, which is rehab center, which is also located here in Ammon. And I work in adult rehab and just a really rewarding career for me. I got involved with the City of Ammon, starting with the Ammon Arts. That was something Mayor Colletti created years ago, about five, six years ago, kind of just before COVID hit. And we started creating ways to celebrate the arts in Ammon. And that's kind of grown into two bigger things with our theater program and things. But then I also became aware of issues that were happening in my neighborhood. And because I had a relationship with the city staff, I was able to get involved with like planning and zoning and attending some meetings and addressing traffic concerns and things. And that's kind of where I fell in love with the process of the city. And when the opening happened, Josh Wheeler won his election and moved up to the state as a House of Representative. I put my name in and I was appointed by Mayor Colletti. And I've been serving in the City Council since January of this year. And it's been a very rewarding thing for me. I've really enjoyed, again, learning the process. Like George mentioned, we are liaisons to different departments. And I'm a liaison to the Public Works and then assistant liaison to our fiber department, which is fantastic. So there's some really good things happening in Ammon. But there is growth and part of that is the reason I want to keep running and be a part of it. I stated earlier, and one of the things I wrote for East Idaho News is, I want to be in the room where it happens. I want to be a part of the discussions. And I want to make sure that the things that make Ammon great are protected and that we give the people a voice. And I feel like I can do that. I can be approachable. My neighbors can talk to me and I can represent them in the City Council.
Lovely. Thank you, Heidi. Robert?
I'm Robert Loveland. I lived in Ammon most of my life. Matter of fact, my father moved here close to 80 years ago. He also was on the City Council, as my brother was. The reason why I wanted to run for City Council is that I feel that there's some things that need to be addressed, roads and such. And I feel that that needs to be taken care of and looked at. Also, just really love Ammon. I've raised my kids here. They've all moved on, unfortunately. All my grandkids are down south, which is kind of sad. But Ammon is a great place to live. It's a great place to raise a family. And the community is just very strong here. You know, having Ammon days, we're able to be able to get together as a community and enjoy each other's company. But I really want to put forth my best effort to give something back to the city and this community that's given so much to me. And that's why I'm running for City Council.
Thank you, Robert. Sean.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Thank you to our hosts and our community. My name's Sean Crystal. I'm running for Ammon City Council, seat one. I've been living in the, City of Ammon for about six years now. I've got my two children. They were born here, being raised here. I'm born and raised in southeast Idaho. So was born in Pocatello, raised in the Goshen area. And then in our search for our first home with my wife, we found Ammon and found this perfect little home that just met our needs at the time. And we've grown to love the community. I'm not a career politician, so I do see that as an advantage. It allows me to bring fresh and innovative ideas to the council. I have a background in business and community involvement. As a Boy Scout, I've always believed in that pay it forward status. I don't feel any of the recognition for the efforts I put out to the community. I just want to do it because I enjoy doing it. That gives me practical leadership skills and a deep understanding of our community's needs. I'm running for City Council because I believe that government should serve as a steadfast steward of our community's voice and resources. I'm committed to sustainable development, infrastructure enhancement, community involvement, and economic stability. My goal is to enhance community engagement, ensure transparent governments, and manage growth in a way that preserves our quality of life here in Ammon. As others have mentioned, we have a great community out here that has a strong sense of that community relation. I thank you for this opportunity and look forward to sharing more about my vision for the city.
Thank you, Sean. Last but not least, Nolan waiting patiently there. Thank you, Nolan.
Thank you. Nolan Wheeler, just want to thank everybody here that's here tonight. And I just wanted to introduce myself. Grew up, born and raised in Ammon. I loved it. Nineteen, I graduated high school from Hillcrest. So I wanted to join the Navy and serve my country. And I served honorably for 10 years. And there's nothing like getting back to Ammon. It's always been home to me, no matter where my travels have taken me. It's always where I've counted home and friends have always been here for me. And I knew I wanted to have my family grow up here as well. It's a great neighborhood, lots of great people. I mean, even growing up, eight years old, going to the Ammon swimming pool, it's just a lot of great things here and still here. But we can always do things, there's always little things that we can work on, like everybody's brought up roads. And that's just one thing, it doesn't take long to find that there's certain things that need help. And I'm just happy to be back home. I've been here for about four years now. Great back to being home to Ammon. It's always been home to me and I always appreciate the people. They're a great community here with me as well, a lot of support. And that's why I kind of decided I wanted to run for City Council, is I talked to close friends and family and they're like, "Yeah, do it." And so I'm like, "All right, well, I got your support. Let's do it." And so that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Nolan. Okay. Really great to hear your introductions and thank you very much for that. And we'll start off with Todd, Todd Coons from Local News Eight has the first question for us. And we'll start with Nolan this time and work our way around that way.
That's great. We'll start there and work back so everybody gets a fair shot. I want to provide a little context, a little foundation for our audience members and for our viewers online. This is being streamed right now. We have eight of the 10 candidates here. Glad to have you here. And you're going to help me with this, with your list. Four of the eight will be elected. There are four vacant seats, correct? Let's see the hands for seat number one. I'm too close. Okay, one, and then one person that is not in attendance. That is seat one. Okay, seat number two, no, three. We have two of the three here for seat three. Seat four. We have all three candidates for seat four. And seat five. Both candidates for seat five. So if that helps a little bit, who you see here tonight, four will go on and four will be voted off the island. Best of luck. For my first question, I really grasped onto a theme with all of your introductions. I heard a common denominator. You moved to Ammon because you wanted to. You grew up here because you wanted to. You have not left because you want to stay. Many of you talked about having children that have moved elsewhere and come back. So therefore, it is no secret that Ammon is growing. It is no secret that this area in general is growing. How do you, as a City Council, manage that growth yet wisely so that you're not behind with infrastructure, but yet you don't get in front of it and make Ammon not what Ammon is? How do you manage growth wisely? Nolan, take it away.
Well, that's a great question. And as you can see, I mean, when I left at 19, Ammon has definitely grown. At some points, it's almost doubled since I've been back. And so it's just, we got to take a step back and we got to work about our infrastructure. We got to know, we know people are going to be coming to Ammon. They're going to continue to come in here. This is not a hidden gem anymore. A lot of people realize how great Ammon is. And so we need to kind of slowly progress and we need to kind of see where, we need to do what we can do best for the City of Ammon. I've heard some people are like, "Oh, well, we need to stop construction altogether," but that's not the answer. What we need to do is we can kind of slow it down, it's going to grow no matter what we do. And so we can kind of manage that. We need to look at what the roads and the infrastructure is definitely the higher priority because we can't have a whole bunch of people in the City of Ammon if the roads are still needing fixed and need help and all that as well. So it's just, there's more and more traffic where we're just anywhere you go. So we need to really focus on that as well. And so that's why it's going to continue to grow no matter what we do. And so that's why we just need to work as a City Council. And that's the one thing I know that the military helped me, is I can work as a team with anybody, no matter where our backgrounds have taken us. And so I can definitely bring that to the table and we can definitely work together to solve solutions for Ammon. Thank you.
Thank you, Nolan. Sean?
So our growth in Ammon is obviously inevitable. We've all seen that. We've seen that, as Nolan Harris mentioned, that we don't, we aren't that hidden gem anymore. But how we manage that growth defines our future. We've got to prioritize smart urban planning, ensuring that as Ammon expands, we maintain our community's character and value. This means investing in sustainable infrastructure, preserving green spaces such as our parks and recreation, and ensuring that development aligns with the needs and desires of our residents. By engaging with the community, collaborating with experts, and making data-driven decisions, we can ensure that Ammon grows in a way that benefits everyone.
Thank you, Sean.
Thinking I should have brought some notes. For Ammon, it has grown quite a bit. Matter of fact, my wife and I were just talking the other day about when we used to drive down Sunnyside, you know, it was just those two lanes and you could hardly get down it during the winter. So the growth around here is just amazing. But for our future, we need to really evaluate, you know, what housing projects are coming in and if our infrastructure can handle that. And we need to maintain this small city or community value because that's why people come here. It's a great place to live. And by controlling the growth and being able to evaluate our infrastructure and see if that can be improved in a timely manner for this growth, that's what we need to address.
Thank you.
All right. I love the fact that you started with the word wisely. And I love the acronym WISE because I was part of a neighborhood group, which was the Wise Growth Development Group. Y is standing for water, or W stands for water. I was infrastructure. S is for safety. And E is education. And those are all factors we have to consider as we develop. Property owners have the right to develop their land, but that is why we have a comprehensive plan. And that is why we have zoning. And that is why we have to go through the annexation process when properties want to come in. But Ammon has not asked enough of the developers. We have to make development pay for development. That has been the biggest mistake. And our comprehensive plan was changed multiple times over the past five years. That is the reason we had our moratorium. And during that moratorium, we were able to correct some big mistakes that were made and changes that were made in that, which will protect, I think, as we grow, that will protect densities, things like that. That'll be important to the City of Ammon. So I just wanted to quote this. This is from the Ammon Comprehensive Plan. It said, "The citizens of Ammon who participated in the comprehensive plan, public input meetings overwhelmingly value the small-town atmosphere provided by their neighborhoods and communities." And I will protect that. I want to ensure that as we grow, this is not just words on paper, but that is the blueprint for Ammon. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Sid?
Thank you for the opportunity. The question, how to keep up with the growth but wisely. Thought about that today, as mentioned by Mr. Loveland over there. I had several members of my family work for Purcell's Dairy on Sunnyside when it was a two-lane, two-lane road. And boy, has it, has it grown. We used to hunt pheasants with the family out here in Sand Creek and just had a wonderful time growing up. And I think that we've grown so fast that there are the issues to do it. But I feel that you need to have strategizing meetings. You need to meet with the people, county, city officials, leadership, leadership positions. And I'm talking men, women. It can be other organizations that have ideas, what their needs are, what their concerns are. And as Heidi said, some of the things that I have really thought about is the school overcrowding. What are we going to do with the growth? Infrastructure issues, safety and security issues. I think we wrote each other's notes today. And road and traffic. And then people don't want to hear about bond and levy issues and different things. But there are some things that are going to have to be addressed in the future for Ammon, whether we do those things. But there are a lot of legislative things that drive those decisions. It's not just a City Council that's going to make those decisions. There are legislative decisions that we need to enact laws and different things and ordinances. But I think we need to find out what the needs are and address those needs appropriately by getting the proper input and looking at both sides of the story because mine's not always going to be the right one. And we need to listen and come to common grounds that really are, that will solidify Ammon for the future because it is a beautiful place to live. And I hope that we continue to make that a beautiful place to live. And I know we can.
Thank you, Sid.
I think that I just did what everybody said. I too served on that committee with Heidi for the Wise Growth. And the research that was done was incredible on the infrastructure of this town, what needs to be done to catch up. We've got a lot of catch-up to do to get to where we need to be. And that is one of the things that I would like to focus on if I get into City Council, of seeing what we can do to make things better. I think we need to be aware of all the different areas in Ammon, the city part of Ammon, the rural part of Ammon, the growing parts of Ammon. We need to really be aware. And I would love, what I would love to have us do as a City Council is, once a month, go to these places, go and see the places that are being preferred for development and see where our roads are, where the water's coming from, see how we're going to get in and out. Because right now, it's already getting pretty congested. It's hard to get kids to school. It's hard to get to work on time. You know, there's a lot of things going on in this city and it's the best place to be. So I hope that we can all just work on it together like a team.
Thank you. Jeff?
I'm glad the name of this tonight was not called a debate. I think initially it was. And then there was And then there was clarification that this isn't a debate. And after speaking with several of the current council persons and then those, those running, I, I don't think we divert a whole bunch on what, what the issues are and, and potential solutions. But, so not to belabor, you know, what's already been brought up. But I'm glad Heidi brought up the, the comprehensive plan. I think as part of that, that Wise Growth, you know, revisiting the plan more than just the five years that's recommended by, by the state to reevaluate that comprehensive plan and, and to provide that direction on, on our growth. But looking at it as needed and continuing to do what, what the city's done the last couple of years. And it's, it's, it's definitely helped and it's created, created a path. And so what that, what that path is gonna look like in, in five years could, could be a lot, a lot different. It depends on the circumstances and what, what we face as a city. No one predicted COVID. No one predicted the, the, the price of homes doubling, tripling and those, those different effects. But as we talk about this Wise Growth, you know, keeping in mind, I kinda compare it to Maslow's hierarchy of need. We've got our, our infrastructure, you know, our roads and our sewer and our water, our things that we need to live at our, at our bottom level. And then we've got our, our facilities. We've got our schools. We've got our parks. We've got the other things that start to make life much better and start to help build our community. But then at the top of that, the pinnacle, our, our self-fulfillment is, is our community. And so as we look at this, this Wise Growth and, and growing our community, keeping, keeping all three of these facets in mind so that we can, we can obtain the vision that we're, we're shooting for.
Thank you. George, thank you for your patience, George.
Sure, yeah. That's right. Got lots of patience. So anyway, one of the things we've, we've seen, you know, in my year and a half or so with the council too, is, is the need for, for change and positive change right there. You know, we've looked at in development coming in that we wanna see, you know, 25% commercial built-in so people don't have to drive so far. They can walk to the grocery store hopefully in the future. They can walk to school. They can, they can walk to the parks. When I moved here in 1998, we lived on Ross Avenue and just across the tracks of those nice open fields. That changed quickly. And there's, what, 3,000 homes out to the east of us right there. We put in a, a moratorium, as Heidi said. Anything east of Crowley, you know, and we're looking at no more than 2.6 homes per acre instead of where it used to. In the previous, it was a little higher than that. And, you know, we do like to have that space between us as far as that goes. I think that the roads is another important issue. And good things are coming. If you didn't get enough road construction this year, just wait till next year. You know, come, come, come when the, very soon, we're gonna be tearing up a bridge on 17th Street east of Ammon Road, replacing that. First Street's gonna be totally redone. And you're gonna have, have about nine months of construction to play with there. There'll be some other, other things happening, extensions of Curlew and John Adams. So anyway, if you don't, if you like those little orange cones, you're gonna see a few in the next year. So anyway, it's important though that, you know, to be on the council, it's not only, you know, our personal beliefs, but, you know, we've got planning and zoning sees everything that comes through before we ever get it. We, we make decisions after it's recommended to us on council. And from there, we can, we can go with their advice, which they go off the comprehensive plan that we kinda helped build, you know, put together for them. But as it comes to us in the council, then we make that decision and, and hopefully try to make sure it's the right one for, for us in the city. But our goal is the same as everybody else here, to make Ammon, keep Ammon a great place to live and raise your families.
Thank you. Okay. Jolynn, I think if we can have a question from you and that will be addressed to these four on this side and then David, who will address these four on this side. I'm just thinking about time. And so Jolynn Thomas from KID News Radio.
They say teamwork makes the dream work. And when you get right down to it, that's the truth. Progress happens when there is a spirit of teamwork. So with that being said, how would you handle disputes with other council members and promote a spirit of teamwork?
Heidi?
I have learned very quickly that there's a lot of compromise, but you have to be civil with one another. And I think that's where we're gonna make the most progress. We definitely have to work together to make, to accomplish anything. We're, we have lots of ideas and lots of solutions. And I think we have to learn to listen to one another. Going beyond just the city council though, it's really important that we start communicating better with the county because they also are responsible for growth in this area and impact our roads and our infrastructure. And we also have to include the school district. We need to better that communication so that we are all on the same page as we grow and we develop.
Thank you.
In my experience, I, working at the site and being a supervisor, I learned to, that you need to be able to communicate very well with people. And there is a lot of compromise on things. Getting the city council, I know that there's gonna be a lot of groups involved, the county, the schools and stuff like that. We're gonna have to listen to them. They're gonna have to understand our point. And we gotta understand their point. And we'll have to compromise on certain things. But there's some areas where the, the city will have to say that this is the way it's gonna be. But within the city council, you know, everybody's on the same level. And we need to make sure that we are civil with each other and we express our point of views correctly and so everybody understands.
Thank you. Sean?
Three key points: communication, discussion, and debate. We should be able to come to the table as civil members representing our community. We should be able to open the conversation, communicate effectively, challenge each other in that communication. I know a lot of us don't like giving up our ideas or, or our input or our opinions, but I'm one who does. I like to be challenged to have a different way of thinking. I may bring my ideas to the table, but I want my fellow council members to challenge me to see things from their point of view. And I want them to be open to that same level of communication. And I think that'll get us far. I know a lot of people tend to lean left or right or this or that. But in reality, when people sit down and have the communication, I find we meet a lot more central ground if we can open that instead of just being like, no, I'm not having that conversation. I'm not having that communication. Those that I actually sit down and debate with, whether we're on completely opposite sides of the fence at the start of the conversation, if they hold that discussion with me, we typically find center ground that works for everybody.
Thank you.
All right. Like I said, in the military, worked with a whole bunch of different people. And now I'm a safety specialist with the company I work for. And so they talk about and you teach about communication. Communication, it's three-way communication. And so that's why I know I can work with anybody. Everybody has different opinions and I always love to hear what somebody else has to say. Because yeah, there is no, it's my way or the highway. It is, everybody has great ideas and I wanna hear them. And I hope they wanna hear what I have to say as well and suggest. And so that's why I know the city council is a great team. And I know we can work together to help out the citizens and listen to the citizens of what they have to bring to us as well. And that's why I wanna have my Facebook page and email to where the citizens can reach out to me of their concerns directly.
Thank you. Okay. Next question from David Pace of the Post-Register.
All right. We're gonna go from teamwork to finances. So what is your economic philosophy and approach to the city budget? And how would you prioritize funding requests?
Sid, you're, you're up first.
That's a real good question because really everything is about money. When you wanna build something, you wanna go somewhere, whether you want to promote somebody or whatever, or insurance, it all involves some type of a money or a budget expenditure or a request. Having the opportunity for, being the jail administrator for my last 17 years, I had the opportunity of working with sheriffs, mayors, county commissioners. And if you've ever worked with policemen, I can tell you type A personalities. You have to have the same thing as the question is teamwork as with the budget. You listen to budget requests. You look at the budget from the previous year to the current year to the next year. Find where your deficiencies are, where your good, good points are, and make the proper adjustments. But you have to have everybody involved, get their, not just their opinions, but get their ideas of where we can spend the money most wisely or back off and do it in another area. So I think being financially responsible is one of the biggest keys that we can do as a city council. And that is communicate with each other and respect each other's opinions and get the, and get expertise advice from people. If we don't know it, don't be afraid to say, hey, I'm not sure. Let's find out the best possible solution. So I think that is going to a budget, is just knowing the budget and knowing the concerns and the needs and how much you actually have, not overextending and then making the mistake and having to come back for the extra funds that you might need. So being fiscal responsible would be the main thing that I would focus on.
Thank you.
I was raised, if you don't have the money, don't spend the money. And then I married a man who is even more so that way. Like if you've got the money, save the money, put it away. So financing is definitely a tricky subject with a tight budget for a city. And I definitely think that it would have to be a, a big, open meeting with everybody in the city, offices, all the city council people. And, you know, we'd have to dress and see where we can cut, where we can, you know, maybe we're overlapping some things. Maybe we're, you know, paying things that we shouldn't be paying for. Finances are definitely tough, whether they're in your house or they're in a city. I think we just need to take a good look at it and strive to do the best we can with the budget. And I think, back to teamwork, you know, we'll all be a team and we'll all be working for the same, for the best of Ammon.
Thank you. Jeff?
For about six years, I managed about 15 different companies in finances, you know, tens of millions of dollars. And a couple of them were co-ops from farmers in the valley. And there was, there was one, one major thing that I learned, that if you weren't communicating with them and telling them where their money was going and what they were getting, that they just assumed the worst. I feel like the communication with, with the public, communication with, with each other and with, with experts, whether that's the city department heads, city administrators, or that's hiring outside experts, that everyone's gotta come together to come up with the best, best solution. I don't think any one person has, has the, the exact right solution all the time. And I think having diverse, diverse input, but also communicating that is, is key and crucial when, when you're dealing with money. Because if people, people don't hear or under, or know or understand, then they tend to, tend to assume the worst. But just being, being wise with, with that money. Sitting in, you know, recent city council meetings, you know, in those discussions of, of funding coming up every, I think almost every one I've come up, there's something that somebody wants money for and, or needs money for. And, and so it's, it's typically the squeaky wheel gets the grease, things that come to the table you aren't expecting but have to be taken care of. But evaluating, communicating, and working together and being ultimately fiscally responsible.
Thank you.
Okay. So yeah, I agree with the fiscal responsibility portion. You know, luckily for us in, in the city of Ammon, you know, we are operating in the black. You know, all, all our projects must be in the black. And, you know, and we've got some reserves to, for emergencies. Unlike, for example, the state of California or the US government and all the money we've gotten borrowed from China, you know, Ammon does a good job, you know, taking care of Ammon. You know, there's the budget meetings we go through and we do those several times a year. And, you know, if there's adjustments need to be made, that's something we would discuss at that point. But the, the bottom line is, is all projects must be in the black. So, you know, somebody mentioned, you know, there's different groups that, you know, come in and asking for money. There, there's a budget for that, you know, to help, help our, our citizens, you know, might be for the Ronald McDonald House. So we, we've helped them out with some of their projects. We've also had some, a few other projects come in, you know. And this year, we had, had just a little bit of money left over that didn't get used. But next year, there'll, there'll be something to help our neighborhood as well. So anyway, it's important to, to stay in the black and think about that all the time. And, and, you know, we're not operating a bank here. So anyway, that's all I got.
Thank you. Okay. Back to Todd. Todd Kuntz from Local News Eight. Next question.
There we go. Some cities, tagging on growth, some cities like to incentivize new businesses when they move in, either getting a tax cut, tax break of some sort, to get established for a certain period of time. How do you balance the incentivizing new business without solely placing the burden back on the taxpayer to fund that infrastructure? Where does this go?
Let's, let's start with Sid.
Okay.
We'll work our way around. We'll go, we'll make sure everyone gets a chance to answer that one.
You know, that is a super good question. And I, I don't have the exact answer, but I do believe incentivizing business for Ammon is not the real key issue because people wanna live here. Why is everybody coming here? Why are businesses wanting to come to Ammon? Because it's a place to live? It's safe community, it's secure community. So I don't really believe that this incentivizing is the best way to go. They wanna be here. We need for these businesses and places that come in to pay their due diligence, whether it's in fees, whether it's in building costs, infrastructure costs and different things. The incentive is to be here. They wanna be here. We just need to be smart and partner with these businesses and places that wanna be here. And we don't have to be rude and we don't have to be arrogant about it. But they wanna be here. Why do they wanna be here? That's the question we need to ask. Why do you wanna be in Ammon? Well, if you wanna be here, let's up the ante a little bit and make them be responsible for some of these safety and security issues, the road issues, the lighting, the sidewalks. I mean, it goes on and on and on. The water, the sewer. I mean, I put down a whole list of things because we love to be here. They wanna be here. Let's let them pay their share. And that's what I, that's what I have to say for Ammon's progress. I think we just need to be proactive and be right there.
Thank you.
As a small business owner in Ammon, I would feel pretty bad if my neighbor next door was getting tax breaks and we weren't. So it's, it's not happening. We came here because we wanted to be here, not because we had any incentive to be here. We didn't get any tax breaks or anything like that. So I agree with Sid. If people want to be here, they need to pay their fair portion. They need to do what's required. You know, my husband has to plow his drive, or his sidewalk in front of his office whenever it snows and take care of things if that's where his business is gonna be here in Ammon. And I think that we all probably feel the same way about this.
Jeff?
Yeah, I agree with everything that's been, been said so far. I feel like the one, one exception may be we have something that makes sense. A good example of this might be the INL wants to come in and partnership and develop some technology center. We have some other, other company that comes in that within a few years, that the economic boom that it brings to our city exceeds whatever tax break or incentive was given. But I think that's where that communication and bringing in multiple, multiple voices and analyzing it, a blanket, always providing incentives for commercial developers is, is not the way to go. A blanket, always providing incentives for commercial developers is not the way to go. But that doesn't mean that there shouldn't be discussions and creative solutions that we can come up with.
Thank you. George?
Just like the government to ask for our help in coming into Ammon. But actually, the good news is that Ammon doesn't incentivize any businesses. You know, we've got what they call the urban renewal district that we use right here. And it's helped bring in some of our shopping centers we have here and, you know, other programs. There's a, it's just a whole different program. We don't have to give up anything to bring in business to Ammon. So keep that in mind because, like you say, if they want to come here, and they should, you know, if it's the right fit for Ammon, then we're going to let them. But they're going to pay their fair share. They're putting in wider streets, lights, helping with, you know, paying, bringing the water and power to their buildings. All those things are going to come. And that's something that we see in the permit fees. And if there's an area of roads that are going to be built out before they show up, when they do come, that's something that is going to be reimbursed by that builder, contractor, company when they come in. So anyway.
Thank you. Heidi?
Yeah, George is right. We do have an urban renewal area. My understanding is that is near John Adams Hit Road over to First Street up towards White Pine. And that is going to be an area of growth, hopefully for commercial, and will pay for itself. And we don't need to incentivize. I voted on two annexations, but there was no incentive that we had to put out for commercial property. People want to be here, like they said. There's also some incentives that can come from the state level, but we don't offer those at the Ammon level, as far as my understanding.
Thank you.
I personally don't support any incentives for businesses coming in. Like everyone has said so far, this is the place to be. And they, these companies want to come here because of this lifestyle that we have here. If these people want to come in, they need to pay their fair share. And unless there's something that's, will give us a lot of benefit for the city that we will recruit later, I pretty much don't care for the incentives.
Thank you.
Sounds like we kind of all agree on that matter. Ammon is definitely a desirable area, and we really don't have the need for incentives to these businesses that want to come here because they do want to be here. But I am going to still answer the question a little differently than my fellow candidates. I'm going to go off the what-if concept. Incentivizing new businesses can be crucial for economic growth, but we're not in California where businesses are just leaving left and right. It shouldn't come at the expense of the taxpayer. We are going to incentivize, however. I do believe in the shared responsibility model. While initial tax breaks can attract new businesses, we must also ensure that as those businesses grow and benefit from our community, they are contributing fairly to the infrastructure and services that they're utilizing. By setting clear expectations and timelines for those incentives, we can ensure that both businesses and residents thrive, creating a sustainable economic environment in Ammon.
Thank you.
Ditto. I'll just say everything they said are great. But to go along with that, I mean, obviously, Ammon is a great place to have a business. You've got Brolims, you've got Chick-fil-A, I love those places a lot, they're really great. So businesses are just going to keep on coming here. And so, yeah, they need to pay their fair share, just like you would expect anybody else. And I'm sure these businesses that have moved here in Ammon have done their fair share, and that's why they're still here. And the population is really great between Ammon and Idaho Falls. And so it's a great place for a business to be at. And so, yeah, I don't think they need any tax breaks because they will have growth no matter what they do.
Thank you. Okay, well, do a bit of a quick fire round if we can, real quick. We'll have Jolene ask a question, and we'll start with Sid on this side, and then David will come to you, and you'll take this side. Okay, Jolene?
How would you increase communication and collaboration with other departments and also with thought leaders in the city of Ammon?
I would, as I've said previously, I would get a hold of other leaders, other people that are in other organizations, mayors, commissioners and whatnot. I had the opportunity, and I'll repeat it probably again. I had the biggest contract almost with the state of Idaho with 500, over 500 inmates. Big, huge budget with medical costs and different things, and a lot of collaboration between all the agency heads and the different things and different sheriffs and different things. And the big thing was communication. They wanted to know what was happening, where the expenses were. And I was accountable for huge amounts of budget. So communications with everybody up and down the aisle, that is the big thing, and being accountable. If they can't account for what their actions are or what they're doing, or the money or different things, they don't need to be there. If I made a mistake, you admit it. If you don't, you don't. But be accountable for all that you do in your actions, no matter what it is. And I just feel that it's huge to have that type of teamwork. But you have to get all the parts involved to be able to make those decisions because you don't always have just the right decision.
Thank you.
Could you repeat the question, Jolene? How would you increase communication and collaboration with other departments and also with thought leaders in Ammon?
Okay, okay. I think the biggest thing to communication is definitely getting the word out. I feel like there could be a little bit better job done through the city of Ammon. More communication through Facebook posts. They bought a new beautiful flashing sign in front of the building. Make sure every time there's a meeting, getting that communication out there, making sure that people know when meetings are, what's going on. Another thing I've thought about is maybe doing a census with the community, you know. We put that out in the monthly thing and see what people really want, see what they want. Do they want the growth? Do they want Ammon to stay rural? Do they want, you know, what do the people really want here? And I think we need to listen to them. Then we meet together with the heads of the departments in all the city of Ammon and all the officials and all the city council, and that's where we come up with our comprehensive plans and with what the city is going to be best at.
Thank you.
When I was coming up with my campaign platform, and I wanted to come up with three words that would define my goals and put them on the bottom of my sign, and it was communication, commitment, and collaboration. And so it fits right in with this and what I've already instituted and what I want to continue to do, which includes meeting with department heads and asking them, you know, what do you need? And what can the city council do to best help you? No surprise to anybody, everybody said we need more money. That was the number one response from the department heads. But even today, getting off the phone, spoke with Sheriff Holtz, discussing the contract that the city of Ammon has with the Bonneville County Sheriff's Department and what the needs are there and how that's going and any concerns going forward. But it's not difficult. It does require time and effort and to be committed in communicating and collaborating and trying to get that feedback from those experts. Like I said earlier, nobody has, no single person has all the answers. But all of those different administrators, department heads have been hired and are experts in their field and definitely need to be listened to. And then those internal discussions, being able to communicate that out to the public and to receive feedback on that.
Thank you.
So, yeah, we, as a council member, it's a great opportunity to be able to meet with department heads. As a group in a public setting, we can do that during budget times and other meetings that we do right there at the city hall. And individually, you can go to any department head and talk to them and so on. There is an issue that if we have more than four councilmen show up to meet with one department head or so on, it becomes a public meeting at that point, and we have to kind of watch that. But if we're going to make sure, find out what each department head needs and wants to proceed, it's something that's always done in a public setting, you know, and it's something on a regular meeting we might have on the second Thursday of the month in the afternoon. That meeting can go anywhere from an hour to four hours long, if you guys are wondering. Our Tuesday and nightly, first and third, kind of do the same thing, go anywhere from two to four hours long. And a lot gets covered in that time, and those are all public meetings where you can show up in person or watch on a Zoom and in your recliner and eat popcorn and so on. But, you know, we're doing the job for the city here. Great thing about the staff we have, all the department heads, they're great people, they do a good job. They all love their team, and, you know, they love working for the city. And, you know, we appreciate them very much.
Thank you. All right, David from the Post-Register to Heidi.
All right, we have another budgeting question for this side of the room, so we get equal time on that. The sheriff's contract is now approaching close to 80% of the general fund. Is it sustainable and what are your top priorities for a general fund?
Regarding the Bonneville County Sheriff's contract, yes, that is a large portion of our general fund. But regarding that, if we were to have our own police force in the city of Ammon, we would need close to $5 million to start that. We do not have that in our general fund. Overall, our rate per person for the contract is actually a very good value. We are growing. I'm not saying that in the future, we won't explore the possibility of having our own police force, but at this time, it makes sense to do the contract. And it's working for us in the city of Ammon. And could you repeat the second part you wanted?
And then what would your top priorities be for the general fund?
Top priorities, back again to the whys, development. We need to make sure that water pays for water. We need to make sure infrastructure is paid for, whether that's by new developments, I mean, by, you know, development, paying for development. Safety, that's making sure we have that strong sheriff contract or possibly in the future, a police force. But, and then education, making sure, that's actually one thing that's near and dear to my heart, is making sure that our schools are not overwhelmed. I want to hopefully help find a way with the legislature to pay for our schools and build them in a different way, not just by bonds. It's not working. We're one of only two states in the United States that still pays solely by bonds, and that needs to change. And we're working on that. I mean, at least from the city level, we can't change a whole lot, but we're trying to communicate with our legislators that we need help and we need our schools supported. So those would be my areas.
Thank you. Robert?
I know many years ago that the city was looking at going to their own department, and the same result came about is that it would cost way too much for the city just to run their own department at that time. And it sounds like it's basically the same thing. I know with our budgets, we need to make sure that we're looking at allocating the money to the proper areas, whether it is with water or the sewers and stuff like that. But we need to make sure that that money is being allocated properly.
Allocating close to 80% of the general fund to our sheriff's contract is kind of concerning to me as a citizen. With such a significant portion limits our ability to address other essential needs of the city, such as that infrastructure issue that we're already seeing. And that police department investment would be part of that infrastructure. As some of the ideas that I proposed with that, a reassessment, I proposed thorough review of the contract to ensure that we're getting the best value for our investment and that we explore potential efficiencies or alternative solutions. As Ammon continues to grow, the safety of our residents does remain paramount. While our partnership with Bonneville County served us well, it's essentially to periodically assess the efficiency and cost effectiveness of this arrangement. When the time comes that a dedicated city police force becomes a more viable and beneficial option for our community, both in terms of response times and fiscal responsibility, I believe we should seriously consider it. Regular evaluations and open dialogue with the community will guide this decision, ensuring we always prioritize the safety and best interest of our residents. As far as general fund priorities, public safety is paramount. We need to ensure that our investment is effective and efficient. Infrastructure, as we've all touched on many, many times today, that's a big part of what the city of Ammon needs. Economic development initiatives that attract and support local business, ensuring a robust economy. We don't have much of a problem with that, though. As we've mentioned, we're not just that hidden gem anymore, people desire to come here. Community services, parks and recreation, community events that enhance the quality of life for our citizens. And future planning, setting aside funds for unforeseen challenges and future growth. A lot of times in the city of Ammon, I've noticed that we rely on outside resources, whether it be from Iona, the city of Idaho Falls, or Bonneville County. So really, if we're spending 80% of our budget for the Sheriff's Association, isn't it time that we start looking at investing in ourselves?
Thank you. Nolan?
It's kind of funny, actually, at the last roundtable last week, I brought this concern up in the city council meeting. Is, yeah, Shelley has its own police force, and they have 5,000 citizens. We have 18,000 here in the city of Ammon. So, yes, maybe it won't be fixed tomorrow, but Bonneville Sheriff's Department has Bonneville County to cover. That Swan Valley, Iona, and Yukon, Idaho Falls, so they have a whole bunch of area to cover. So I think eventually, yes, I would like to see our city of Ammon have their own police department. And I have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, and so I would love to see that happen personally in the city of Ammon. And for the general fund, there's always the ongoing, what the citizens need. And I know focal point on some people is the pool, and I would love to see that. Kind of, I remember eight years old, swimming in that same pool. So it is definitely one of those things that I would like to see continue to be there. And one day, my kids be able to continue to enjoy it as well. And so, thank you.
Thank you very much. But we're going to leave it there, and we're running out of time. And I personally want to thank each one of our candidates coming out today and answering those questions. And thank you for our audience here today for coming along and listening. As the Chamber of Commerce, we really want to try and do a better job of providing a platform for people to be able to come and listen to our local leaders and hear what they have to say and utilize our local press and media as well to help get the word out. So thank you to you all, and thank you to Todd Koons from Local News Eight, David Pace from the Post-Register, and Jolene Thomas from KID News Radio. And last but not least, a huge thank you to CEI for letting us use this wonderful facility and to have all the microphones and the tables and everything. And that was all thanks to Dave Facer sitting at the back of the room there. So really great answers, really great questions, lots for people to think about as we move forward. So thank you all very, very much for coming out tonight, and hopefully we'll be able to do this again the next time around. Thanks a lot.